I'd like to call the September 3, 2019, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Again, thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment to acknowledge the people that have been impacted by Hurricane Dorian in the Bahama Islands, where many lives have been lost and entire neighborhoods have been destroyed. We know that communities along the North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida coast are at risk from this hurricane as well. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence during which people may offer a silent prayer for the families that have suffered losses and for the people who are still at risk. Let's remember to appreciate all the people who are helping to save lives during this natural disaster. In response to a request from the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management, the Urban Search and Rescue Task Force II, which is comprised of 30 members drawn from the Buncombe County Emergency Services staff and multiple Buncombe County Fire Districts, was deployed earlier today to Blaydon County in preparation for assisting coastal communities at risk in the Carolinas. We are grateful for their service and wish them a safe return home. And finally, let's reflect on how each of us can take steps in the coming days to help the people and communities recover from this storm, both here in the United States and our neighbors in the Bahama Islands. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we've got a couple of announcements. First, we want to announce that we have parking validation for any members of the public that are attending the meeting who use the county's parking deck or Asheville Transit to attend the meeting. You can get validation for your parking or transit passes from one of the officers who is in attendance this meeting. At the meeting this evening, see them on the way out, and that validation is for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." All right, we now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So move.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, and we now come to, good news, we have Keith Miller, our tax assessor, with us, and he's going to present information about the Tax Assessment Award Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. Keith, thanks for being with us.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's always good to come here with good news that we can share with everyone. So let me give you a little bit of background. Most assessment professionals across the United States and internationally belong to an organization called the International Association of Assessant Officers. The organization was started back in 1934 and has over 7,000 members currently nationally and internationally. The IWAO, as we refer to it, is an organization which offers specialized education and support to assessment administrations through research libraries, listserv, to give us access to talk to other assessors across this country on how that processes may be working. But they also offer many certifications for individuals and jurisdictions. And what I want to share with you today is a Buncombe County jurisdictional award. It is an award that must be earned, and it's not an award which you can be nominated for. We embarked on this almost a year ago. I asked the staff to accept this challenge, and they did. And we put together a team and a leader to get us through this. Took us seven months to complete it. Over 144 different questions that we have to answer, which requires a narrative, written narrative, and supporting documentation of that narrative on how we conform to those standards. Some of those items, some of those areas of interest to the IWAO is management, staffing levels, information technology, land records, data collection, sales ratio studies, land valuation, residential valuation, commercial valuation, value defense, customer service. So this was a good opportunity for us to take a deeper dive into our procedures and our business processes that we have every day to identify our strengths and weaknesses compared to the standards in which the IWAO has set for offices such as ours. So along with that, too, it's a great team-building effort for the staff to come together and work on this project together. Helps everyone understand better what we do every day and why we do it and what's important to us. So what this does for us and why do we do this? Improve morale, confidence in our staff, promotes communication, collaboration, and teamwork in the staff, increase in public trust. And also, probably the biggest one, is that every citizen should know that when they deal with us, is that they are dealing with a group of people that adheres to the high standards in appraisal and assessment administration. So I would like to have some of the staff here, and I would like to have them stand and be recognized. First, I will recognize Joe Turner. Joe was, Joe, if you'll stand, Joe was our lead and project manager who got us through these seven months. Everyone else, please stand. So these are personal property, real property assessment staff. Everybody had some piece of this project, and everybody worked on this project together. They've really worked hard. They deserve the recognition. And in July, the Board of Directors of the IWAO awarded Buncombe County the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. And that's due to the staff and to the support that we get from this Board and from our team of county management. So we appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Great job, Keith. Great job, everyone. Congratulations.
Keith, have them come forward, and let's get a picture of them up in front of us here, please.
We will join you.
Yeah, we can just stand up back here.
Do you want us to come down, Cataldo, or stay up here? Okay, great. Seems kind of ominous somehow. All right, congratulations again.
Hey, Cataldo, can you Photoshop that light off the top of my head on that? Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, congratulations again to Keith, everyone on your staff, and everyone who's been involved in this. It's a great honor for the organization reflects well on all of Buncombe County. So thanks to the great work all of you do. Okay. And next up, we're going to have a presentation on tourism management and investment plan. And Tim Love from Buncombe County and Stephanie Brown from the Tourism Development Authority are here to present this item.
Ready? Well, hello. Thank you so much for allowing me to have some time on the agenda today. I'm so excited about the opportunities that are presented in this planning process. And I'd like to give a special thanks to the county manager and Tim Love and the team at the county that's been working with us through the beginning of this process. You know, I'm excited about how much benefit the residents of Buncombe County will derive from the strategies that come out of this plan. I'm joined today by Jim Muth, who is the immediate past Chair of the TDA and also serving in the capacity of Chairman of the Steering Committee for this project.
Do you mind if I take now?
Thanks. So I'd like to just very briefly provide some context, and I promise I'll move quickly on to the details of the planning process. As you know, the BCTDA is a public authority with a mission to benefit the community by attracting overnight visitors, people to visit Buncombe County, and that expands the customer base for local businesses and provides jobs and generates tax revenue. The BCTDA is appointed to oversee the administration of the occupancy tax, which is a funding source that was created in 1983. The law specifies that 75% of the tax revenue is used to promote Buncombe County and attract overnight visitors. And of course, the occupancy tax is charged on top of sales tax that's paid by people staying overnight in paid accommodations in the county. In 2001, the tax rate was increased to create the Tourism Product Development Fund, which has become the largest source of grant funding in western North Carolina before the creation of the Dogwood Trust. Since 2001, the TDA has awarded $44 million to 39 community projects. And the Tourism Management and Investment Plan, now commonly referred to as T-MIP for short, is the next generation of that program. So the public benefit of this investment is bringing more money into our local economy for the benefit of the community. In total, about 3.9 million people are attracted to spend the night. They spend $2 billion a year in Buncombe County. That's money in cash registers of local businesses, and that puts more than 18,000 people to work in tourism-related jobs. It also generates almost $200 million of state and local tax revenue, including 31% of all the sales tax that's generated in the county, and tourism-related businesses pay about 19% of all the property tax. A new cycle of hotel construction started in the fourth quarter of 2015, and we've calculated that through that construction cycle, the property value of hotels will have increased from about $6.4 million a year to double to about $12.7 million a year. The law that created the TPDF has a few basic requirements. The grants provide funding for capital projects. So that creates things that are here for a long time, that are not only enjoyed by residents but also help to bring customers into our community. It also requires that projects significantly increase overnight visitation to the county. And it specifies that projects have to be evaluated by a Product Development Fund Committee and awarded by the BCTDA. And so here's kind of a list of the projects that have received funding. Like I said, $44 million to 39 community projects. You know, in a lot of communities, occupancy tax dollars are dedicated to one big thing, like Convention Center. I think what's special about this, the way that it's structured here, is that this money has built things that help to attract customers to the community but also has made things that are enjoyed by residents, including recreation facilities, museums, sports facilities, and infrastructure, and parks. In our most recent funding cycle in 2018, these are the projects that received funding. Very pleased with a set of cultural assets that are really important to the heritage of the area. The YMI Cultural Center received $800,000, and the matching grant requirement was waived. What's really special about that project is that these funds will help the YMI to build a source of revenue through creating an event center so that it can be rented. The Leaf Global Arts Center will be right across the street as an anchor to the block. The Stevens Lee Museum at the Stevens Lee Recreation Center also waived the matching grant requirement to preserve and present that really important part of our community's heritage and the African-American contributions and legacy to the community. The fourth grant was funding lights and parking at the Arboretum that will enable them to generate more revenue by staying open later and hosting more events. So in 2018, the grants were awarded in October, and the TDA approved a plan to take a more strategic approach to the allocation of this funding source. And I can't emphasize enough what a monumental shift this approach is from the application-based process that awarded one year's worth of revenue at a time into the project that I'll be describing today. It also represents a commitment and an acknowledgement that maintaining the quality of our community for residents is maintaining the quality of our community for visitors, and we understand that it's critical to preserve, protect, and grow sustainably for the mutual benefit of residents and visitors alike. Nobody wants Asheville to be a place that is only about tourism. The cornerstone of this planning process include community input and collaboration with public entities to find alignment between the legislative mandate of the fund, the priorities of the residential community, and the opportunities to manage tourism and sustaining and enhancing the quality of place. Our goal is to align the needs of the community with the requirements of the fund. We are building on the robust application-based process and embracing a community-based investment strategy. The new approach has three important differences from the typical approaches that have been taken in the past. The first is the significant amount of community engagement that will help prioritize the needs and opportunities. Secondly, it has a focus on collaboration with public entities. So as you're familiar with, in the past, applicants would apply for funding, and we would start the process in June, and those applications would be evaluated and either receive funding or not at the end of the cycle. In this approach, we can collaborate and be partners with municipal partners and public entities to synergize between projects and help to enhance those projects to align with the priorities of the community and the goals of the fund. And third, and most importantly, instead of awarding one year's worth of funding at a time, we'll be looking strategically over a 10-year planning horizon or even longer so that more monumental projects could be accomplished that would exceed the funding that's available in just one year. We think that the three Commissioner districts provide a pretty good system for categorizing potential projects geographically and evaluating opportunities to develop tourism across the county while also building amenities that the community enjoys. So a little bit about the planning process. We've embarked on a process of collaboration. And so, you know, that kind of inherently means that at the very beginning, you don't really know exactly what will happen, and we've really embraced this process of, you know, welcoming comment and welcoming collaboration and creating a framework that will guide this process but embarking on a process that may not have predetermined outcomes. And we're really excited about the way that it's progressed already and the potential that is developing. For members of the public who would like more information about T-MIP, we've created a website. It's ashvillecvb.com/tmip, and all of the documents are posted there. There's a feedback button. There's a request for more information so that you're notified when anything changes, and there's some Q and As. So this is the basic framework that was developed to set goals and a timetable. We have just finished Phase One, and a report will be presented at a Tourism Management Forum that's in development for October 22nd or 23rd. So stay tuned for those details. And the project is scheduled to wrap up in April, and I'll talk more about these phases in just a minute. I wanted to touch first on the structure for T-MIP that's been created to kind of harness the collective brain power of the community. And it breaks down in kind of these categories. We've established a community leadership council that has 50 members. That membership list is published on the website, and, you know, it represents all of the townships and municipalities with the managers and the elected officials from each, as well as, you know, many, many community organizations that represent a really wide range of perspectives. There's a steering committee that's comprised of people who have formerly served on the Tourism Product Development Fund, and so their job is to guide and give feedback to the consultants who've been hired for this project and also to, you know, kind of help guide projects so that they align according to the legislative mandate. In Phase One, I'll share more specifically what we've done, but Buncombe County residents are providing a great deal of input. We've had really terrific amounts of public engagement in this phase, and I'll share with you what that was in a minute. But also importantly, our municipal partner project teams, I can't say how much we appreciate these folks because, you know, we know that both the City of Asheville and Buncombe County staff have a lot of demands and priorities to manage, and we really appreciate them leaning in and helping us develop this strategy. The Tourism Product Development Fund Committee, of course, by legislative mandate, will have to evaluate these projects according to the criteria, and of course, the BCTDA will approve the allocation of funds. So I've given you a lot of detail in this deck. I'm not going to go over every point. I just wanted to provide some reference materials. But Phase One is all about assessment and creating a common set of information that can be used by the community and stakeholders as we move through this process. So there is a lot of data that's being collected, economic data, data about how people move through the county, where visitors are, where are there areas of crowding. And so the deliverables at the end of this phase, at the meeting in October, will be an existing conditions analysis, and it'll be presented to the TDA but also at this public forum the week of October 21st. It looks like it'll be the 22nd or 23rd. So what we have done in this phase is conducted two input meetings with the Community Leadership Council so far, three public input workshops. We've had meetings with city and county staff and other community groups. We've completed a community sentiment survey that was conducted with a representative sample and also an invitation for anyone who wanted to complete the survey. I think it gave every opportunity to collect honest feedback about people's feelings about tourism. We've had over 2,000 responses to that survey. It was open from August 1st until August 23rd. And we also did a visitor sentiment survey to collect feedback about the quality of visitor experiences while they were here in Buncombe County, and then the existing conditions analysis that I talked about earlier. So we're starting Phase Two, which is all about discovery. And so Phase One creates a common set of information to work with. Phase Two is about bringing all of these projects together, and your team has been great about working ahead of the process and kind of collecting some ideas. So those are coming, you know, onto the table, and we'll be looking for synergies in how to take the problems that are identified through Phase One and look for solutions that meet the requirements of the fund, resonate with the priorities of the community, and have synergy together so that maybe some of these smaller projects that wouldn't qualify for funding through the regular application process might be enhanced by being joined with another strategy. So PGAV is our consulting team. They'll be back in Asheville September 10th and 11th with another set of meetings that are more focused on project ideas. The TDA will receive a detailed update of the process, not of the results of Phase One, but of the process, at its meeting on September 25th. I apologize for the first names, the informality of... We have two meetings scheduled with myself and the city manager and the county manager, and then additional meetings will be scheduled after the Tourism Management Plan. So Phase Three is about collaboration and, you know, bringing potential projects together. And then in Phase Four will be about the prioritization, because, you know, everything that you do deals with finite resources for a long list of priorities. And so in Phase Four, hopefully we'll have scope and cost for many of these projects, and we'll be able to look at how can they be funded over a long time period. So rather than say, in this funding cycle, we have a certain amount of money to allocate, we can look out forward into a planning horizon to say, okay, these are the things that are important and that have the best return on investment from the goals of the fund's perspective but also from the priority of the community's perspective, and we can do some problem solving around how to allocate that funding into future years. So thank you for your patience. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Stephanie, I've got one that, you know, I want to put you on the spot, but it might help the... You mentioned about the districts. You know, you have any thought on how, you know, you're going to get collaboration from, you know, and comments from all three districts? I mean, it's not an easy thing to do. I know you get a lot of comments from myself, you know, about different areas, and I'm sure from other Commissioners, which is one way to do it, but I didn't know if you had any other thoughts on that.
You know, we have invited the managers of the towns and the elected officials of the towns. I think the Community Leadership Council is kind of a really good format for collecting that information. We've had, you know, county staff who've had individual meetings with representatives throughout the county. The survey was widely, widely distributed and publicized and had a lot of participation in it. And so, you know, I think the nature of this is that rather than, you know, just accepting a set of applications and moving forward, you know, it's a process that is inclusive and allows people to join in, you know, as we move forward. So, you know, I mean, we're a county-level organization and have relationships throughout the county, and so, I mean, before this process began, there was an awareness of some pretty exciting ideas from really kind of every part of the community, and so we're seeing more things emerge. And through opportunities like this, I'm sure we'll hear from additional people who have had, you know, an idea on their wish list, and we welcome them to come to the table.
So I realize, you know, this is a work in progress, right? So thanks for the update. Thanks for coming, and I think it's a great idea to have this sort of process for thinking about, you know, this significant source of resources that will be generated over the long term. So thanks for taking a step back and looking at, you know, what makes sense that we can really accomplish over many years. So, and for being here tonight to give us this update as well. Are any, like, just where you're at in the process right now, are there sort of, I mean, like you said, there's lots of ideas. Are certain things sort of emerging now that you could share with us? Or, you know, what's the, you know, what's the public input or kind of some of the headlines that you would share with us at this point in the process?
I think it would be, you know, premature to kind of jump ahead, but I will restate that, you know, the words in the title of this study are each important. It's a Tourism Management and Investment Plan to Develop Community Assets. And so, you know, we kind of recognize that the impacts of tourism, you know, are creating some... creating some experiences in our community that residents don't like. And there are feelings that, you know, that we're being overwhelmed by tourism. And so, you know, I'm sure that we will have projects that are throughout the whole county. But I think it's also important that we look to some urban planning strategies to help maintain the quality of the experience, you know, that residents are having in their home. And so I think that some things that, you know, a lot of people call infrastructure, that we might call place, you know, are definitely things that are high priority to, you know, understand how we can use placemaking to better distribute visitors and create better economic opportunities in lots of different places. And, you know, deal with some of the things that, you know, are, are priorities for maintaining our infrastructure and the quality of our place. And I think that will happen, you know, in lots of different areas.
Okay. So, you know, and again, I really do think that this process is, is great. And I appreciate all the, you know, leadership from the TDA in setting up the structure. And it sounds very inclusive in a lot of different ways. You know, the, as you are well aware, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the community around the, you know, there's a lot of folks who would like to see the formula of the revenue from the hotel occupancy fee be a little different than it is today. So the, but the premise of the kind of public input process for this process though is, you know, the law is what the law is today, right? So how, how would it make sense to program those funds going forward? So I guess just the one sort of process concern I would just raise, and I'm sure you all have thought about this though, is, you know, I'm sure there are a lot of folks who would like to kind of talk about ideas for what, you know, if it's, if the conversation is limited to just capital investments, you know, are we missing out on part of the conversation for what some of those different management strategies, you know, might, might look at it in the future? If, if we're sort of saying that's not something that can be part of the conversation through this process? You know, if the legislation were, you know, it might be different in the, in the future than it is today.
Well, you know, the responsibility of the TDA and the staff of the TDA is to work within the legal parameters, you know, that are established right now. But that doesn't really put limits on this process to, you know, identify priorities and, you know, and then to understand what is a fit for the legislation as it is now or as it may be. You know, I think that to, you know, for the first time ever, to, in a very structured way, assess what our needs are, identify a priority list, it will have some price tag on it. You know, that price tag may come within, you know, the restrictions of, you know, the current amount of revenue, or it may create a wish list that has so much community support and tourism industry support that it would create a shared vision for what we'd like to accomplish in the future.
So, so, you know, if there, if there were, I guess my, I'm trying to think of the right way to phrase it, but I mean, I guess one of the questions I've thought about just, you know, hearing the presentation and the, and the process is, is whether this process might kind of illuminate or create, you know, kind of some maybe shared consensus around or greater agreement around the formula in the future, if there were. You know, I mean, there are a lot of people who have the position that they'd like to see it changed. A lot of folks have said, no, you know, we really believe that we have, you know, we have the formula right. It's been successful in all these different ways. So do you think that this process might lead to some greater community common ground around this question? That's been, you know, pretty, we've been pretty divided as a community on it in the past. When it came to our board, we were four to three, right? Like, we'd, we had to debate whether to raise the occupancy last, the last time. And, you know, it was a spirited debate, and, and we were almost exactly, you know, equally on both sides of that question.
I think that this, this process incorporates many very important differences from how we've approached this in the past, aside from the structural differences, you know, that we've talked about before. You know, one is an assessment of, you know, how, you know, how can we look at this framework differently than we do right now? You know, we've been very focused on bricks and mortar. Well, you know, the intention of this system is to create things that last a long time, right? And so I think there'll be a new set of eyes around, you know, what that means and what, you know, really qualifies for funding. We're doing, you know, a whole amount of analysis on, you know, how can this money be used, can, you know, for debt financing and, you know, some creative ways of looking at how this money can support things that we haven't had that toolkit in the past. You know, we'll end up, you know, kind of creating this list of priorities. And, you know, we haven't had a framework before to come together and evaluate, you know, real, I mean, everything's a trade-off, right? So I think if we just embark and we focus on doing our very best work to embrace this collaborative process and identify this kind of shared vision, you know, I think we'll see where we end up at the end in how much money is needed, how much support is behind, you know, the projects that emerge and whether, you know, more flexibility is necessary.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions or comments? All right. Well, Stephanie, thank you very much for being here and for the update. I, you know, I do think a lot of good is going to come out of this. And I can tell a lot of work is going into it. And so I appreciate you all really, again, taking the time and creating the space for this conversation. And I, and I do hope that, you know, I do hope there will be, I mean, that, you know, the concern I've raised is the only kind of process concern I have is that, you know, if it is just limited to capital, do we, do we miss part of the potential conversation? But I'm sure that the people of the community will not hesitate to share their, you know, their perspective on all these issues as they, they have been very willing to do in the past. I'm sure you will continue to hear, you know, those points of view as well.
I appreciate that. And I just want to emphasize that the discussions are not limited to capital. You know, in the end, the money will be allocated according to, you know, the legislation. But we're not taking things off the table. And, you know, in the end, we may have, you know, priorities that we work together to find other sources of funding, you know, to accomplish them or look for flexibility in the resources that are available. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. Okay, next up, we don't have any public hearings. County managers' reports.
Thank you, Chairman. I will ask Attorney Frew to just give you a brief update on the settlement we discussed of Rab Builders. So I want to ask him to do that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, a couple of weeks ago, we met in closed session. And I'll just start by kicking off with, this is one of the nuances with closed session rules that we don't deal with very often. So let me just tell you what that is. We're, of course, allowed to go into closed session to discuss with attorneys employed by or retained by the commission to discuss and retain legal matters and preserve privilege. In this particular instance, a couple of weeks ago, we met and this board gave instruction as to settlement authority for mediated settlement conference. So this is a report back to the board as how that mediation settlement conference was completed and how this case was settled. This is the Rab Builders case that we've talked about a couple of times before. In April of 2018, Rab Builders had a CUP, that's a Conditional Use Permit, application before the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment denied the application. That matter was appealed to Superior Court. The Superior Court affirmed the denial. That case went on to the Court of Appeals and was pending as of several days ago. In the interim, in March, you know, in May of this year, Rab Builders filed a federal lawsuit alleging constitutional violations, presumably for violating their due process rights. In essence, what Rab Builders was alleging was that the Board of Adjustment was required to accept and approve its Conditional Use Permit application on its face as presented and that the board exceeded its authority in denying the application. It's important to note that at all levels thus far, at the Board of Adjustment level and at the Superior Court level, the, the efforts of planning staff and of our legal team, both internal and external lawyers, I think did a great job. What happened in July of this year, on July 11th, the state legislature fundamentally shifted the risk and burdens of how these cases are to be presented and defended and dealt with going forward. That legislation said in part that this clarifies the intent of existing law and apply to ordinances adopted before, on, or after the effective date of this legislation. What that did for us as a motivating factor to settle this case was that it all but eliminated our defenses of muteness. This Rab Builders no longer had an option to buy the property. They didn't own the property. They didn't have a development plan they could continue with. So what was there to fight about? And that's what we're going to the Court of Appeals about very shortly. The deadline to have filed that appeal and gone before the Court of Appeals was today. So that would have been set for calendar in a couple of weeks. The other motivating factor to move forward with the mediated settlement conference was that that legislation also says that the court shall award attorney's fees to the plaintiff. It doesn't mean if they win. It just says they shall award those attorney's fees. So it was our goal to go into a mediated settlement conference to try to settle this, these claims as a cost of defense measure, since we knew it was going to cost us over $200,000 by our best estimates to go to the Court of Appeals, probably to the Supreme Court of the state, and then to defend in the, in the federal jurisdiction in the Western District. After, on last Wednesday on the 28th, after over 10 hours of mediated settlement, following demands of the plaintiff to, for damages and lost profits of over $2 million, we were able to settle the claim for $200,000, which we estimate would have been less than the amount of our attorney's fees, again, to defend these actions. So that achieved those goals. Now, we have learned some things from this. I want to make sure that the board understands. I mean, this is, once every 10 years, in my experience with the county, almost 20 years, a suit like this will come along and just snowball out of control. In this case, we have made some positive steps to make sure our application process is more strict and easier to follow, and it's easier to understand who the applicant is and who the applicant isn't. Also, to make sure that cases are worked in a more methodical procedure. So again, I mean, this case was settled for $200,000. The cases, the money has been transferred. The Court of Appeals decision has been released, and the federal lawsuit has been dismissed. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if I can.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
And this is, again, it's just a report only. No vote is necessary by the board.
So if, if the, if the state had not made the change, we still had liability in this because they had filed a suit. Would have probably ended up settling, but for, for quite a bit less money, basically, is your best guess.
Well, if a case goes to the Court of Appeals, it's anybody's guess as to what's going to happen. So that's, that's always something to worry about. Anything that's on appeal, anything that goes to a jury. And the mediation, mediations are designed, and we're bound by Rule 48 of the Rules of Evidence to keep certain things that were talked about confidential. Because you want to come in and you want to see the whole case, warts and all, to try to prompt a settlement.
But the, the, the change in legislation did not just address the question about whether someone has standing? There were, there were other changes to the legislation that also were beneficial to the position of the developer in these types of legal challenges. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it wasn't just the standing question.
Correct.
The, the potential liabilities to local jurisdictions was greatly enhanced because of the state legislature's change, change of law, correct?
Yeah, many more parties under today's legislation have standing to bring in action or be involved in these lawsuits than previously was the case. Yes, sir.
And the, the potential damages are also greater as well?
There are greater as well. In terms of not discretionary attorney's fees from the judge, but shall award them.
Right, right.
So clearly, I mean, much of this legislation is designed to promote development, to limit the hand of denial at the local level. But at the same time, it makes the local jurisdictions more mindful of what their ordinances do and can't do, and make sure that applicants do, in fact, comply with the ordinances as written.
So just one other thing for me. You had, you had used the term mediation. I just want people to make sure they understand this is a result of that mediation, not just, you know, numbers being thrown around and tried, you know, from us. But it's, that's a result of the, of the mediation and that negotiation part of it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Um, Michael, I'm sorry, was there another question? Okay. Could you just say a little bit more about, so, so we had a closed session to be briefed by council on this ongoing legal issue. And the commission gave some guidance to the attorneys representing the county's position on this. And through this mediation, there's been a settlement reached. But we, so we don't actually have to vote in open session to ratify that decision. Under our policies, the, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that no public vote is required on this. Because a lot of things that might be done in public session eventually then have to be voted on in a public meeting. But this is, but this is different. So I just wanted you to kind of talk us through that, why that's the case.
Yes, sir. I believe it was two weeks ago, we brought before the board the quarterly settlements. And we've been doing that for a better part of a year now to try to get back on a cycle. The statute authorizes settlement of claims at almost any level. And what the end part of the, this statute, 143-318-11A3, and that's if you're in a, in a closed session, for the body to give its attorneys authority to settle claims. So you go forth and do good and settle it. If that happens in a closed session, then that settlement shall be reported to the public body and entered into the minutes as soon as possible.
Okay.
So the numbers are larger this time, but same process as those quarterly reports. Because the last quarterly report was a fender bender for like $1,400.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Avril, do you have any other manager reports?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, the next item, we don't have any old business items, under new business, we have a resolution authorizing technical corrections for contracts policy.
Hello.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Michael Frew here again.
In November of 2018, this board approved the procurement manual. The procurement manual has the procurement policy, contracts policy, procurement cards, meals and meetings, gift cards, travel, and surplus property. Recently, we noticed that there's a discrepancy between the procurement policy and the contracts policy. And that is simply in the procurement policy, this board, under budgetary authority, authorizes the county manager or designee to enter into certain contracts as budgeted for departments, service contracts, contracts that might be within the general discretion of general services, things like that, just run-of-the-mill things that this board approves in every budget cycle. The contracts policy, however, says that that manager's ability to appoint a designee is only through the budget ordinance. But we don't do that anymore. It used to be standard practice prior to 2017 for this board to say that the county manager has authority or a designee to enter into these contracts. But now this, we did that as a standalone policy through this procurement manual. And so to fix that, as shown in the resolution there in the first paragraph, we just want to say that this board delegates certain signature authority to the county manager as set forth in the procurement policy. And to make sure everyone understands, this doesn't delegate stuff that this board has to do, real estate contracts, economic development agreements, and other things of a formal nature in contracting or bidding. So this is just a simple cleanup of what we put in place, or this board put in place last November.
Excuse me. That, and that's the part where we, the stuff goes through GovCo and, you know, we sell the stuff after.
That's not this particular one, but this is part, that's in the surplus policy, which is in the manual. But that's not this particular discrepancy.
What is this? Want to say that one more time?
This is for the county manager's authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the board or to name a designee to do it, such as an assistant county manager.
Right. Okay. And that's, okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. All right. Questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, authorizing a resolution on the technical correction for contracts policy. Are there members of the public wish to comment on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Michael. Okay, and next up, we're going to talk about a resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a lease agreement with the City of Asheville for the property where the East Asheville Library is located. And Jim Blanton, our library director, will present this for us.
So I'm here tonight to, to ask for the authorization for the county manager to enter into a lease with the City of Asheville for the, a ground lease for the new East Asheville Library. Have a few highlights to talk about with regards to the lease. The terms are that it's a dollar per year for 99 years. And in exchange for that, uh, our responsibility as the county will be, uh, to demolish the existing buildings, excluding the fire station that's on the site, uh, to construct the new East Asheville Library, and also will be responsible for all repairs, maintenance, and care of the lease premises. Uh, what I want to highlight though tonight is that in, in addition to those, which we anticipated those costs, there are some additional, uh, items that were negotiated as part of the lease. And those include renovation of the existing basketball court, replacement of the existing playground, and enhancing the pedestrian crossing at Tunnel Road. So to talk a little bit about those, um, when I first came on board, we had a public meeting in December to unveil the design of the new building. And one of the things, uh, that the, um, that emerged from that discussion was how important the playground and basketball court were to the community, that how well-used it is and what a, uh, what an important feature it is of that property. So we had a subsequent meeting in March, uh, to receive additional feedback from the public about those features. And, uh, they, they continued to express how important those elements were to have a playground with the types of things you expect, such as swing sets, playsets, et cetera. And so we took that to heart, and also the city did too. And, uh, they incorporated it as part of this lease agreement. And, uh, truly I feel that it is going to be an enhancement to that property, that we continue operating those features. Uh, it'll make it a true family destination, and, uh, I think it'll overall be a benefit to the project. The, the Tunnel Road crossing was something also negotiated as part of the lease agreement. And it's an awkward crossing right now where Tunnel Road intersects Avon. It's not very safe, and, uh, adding that feature we do think would be a, a benefit. And as I mentioned, these are additional costs that weren't anticipated as part of the, uh, original budget. Um, but we feel that we can, uh, hopefully, once the final, um, costs come in, we can work within that budget. Uh, Parks and Recreation has, uh, received a matching grant for the playground of $35,000. Uh, the planning department's also in negotiation, or in talks, I should say, with NC DOT to look at their potential participation in the, in the Tunnel Road crossing. We're planning to continue to fully fund that as part of the project budget. You know, nothing's guaranteed, but, uh, we are having those conversations. And just as a reminder, this is the, the property, and, uh, the red outline will be the, um, the leased area. It's about 1.8 acres. Uh, if you're familiar with the, the site as it exists now, the existing library will be demolished, as we mentioned, and will move to the, uh, rear upper left-hand corner of the property. Current square footage of the building is 2,700 square feet. It's gonna jump to 15,000, which will be significant, be a, a major, uh, upgrade and, and a real game changer for, for that library, to say the least. Our anticipated timeline, uh, the construction documents actually are now 100% complete as of this week. The project will go out to bid on September 12th, and then the bids will be due back in mid-October, where we'll get our final cost estimate. And then, uh, we're hoping to break ground sometime in October or thereabouts, with a anticipated completion date of October 2020, a 10-to-12 month, um, construction cycle. And since it's been a little while since we talked about it, we thought we'd include a few images. There, we don't have, uh, final renderings of what the building will look like, but, uh, from the existing construction documents, these are just a reminder of some of the images we showed previously, uh, to give you a sense of what the building will look like. It's gonna have lots of, uh, windows, lots of natural light, which will be a wonderful improvement. If you've been in that building right now, it's very claustrophobic. It was wonderful for its time, but it's certainly in, in, in need of improvement, as we mentioned. Uh, over on the, the right side, which gives you that aerial view, you'll see there's kind of a plaza area. And going off to the right, there will be where the playground will be relocated to. Um, so, and that's near Lindstone Court, if you're familiar with that, that area. So, um, really exciting. I think it's gonna be a, a wonderful, uh, feature for the community. One of the things I'm really excited about too is that it's gonna be a game changer for the library system as well. We haven't built a library in a number of years, as you know. And, uh, libraries have changed a lot in the intervening decades, and I think it's gonna be a real, um, showpiece for what's possible in libraries today. So I couldn't be more excited about the project and really appreciate your consideration of this resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blanton. Are there any questions, or is there a motion to authorize the, uh, entering into of the lease for the property with the City of Asheville for the East Asheville Library?
Second.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion?
I'll give you two guesses what my question about a library is. I asked this a couple of years ago. Haven't got an answer yet. How much does East Library in Buncombe County cost? And how many people do they serve? You have to know that information. Nothing against this project, but you need to know where your money's going and how many people it impacts. So I'll ask the question again. And I'll continue to ask it even during the agenda or before the meeting, till I get my answer.
Anyone else? All right, Commissioners, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I've got a question, a comment. Um, and it's in response to the public comment. I've heard that several times. Is there not a way that we can get that information? And, or is it on the website, or is it, you know, are people just not able to get to it, or, uh, cause I know we're not, I mean, it seems to me like a reasonable question to know, um, you know, how much the operating cost is for each of the libraries and, you know, and, and give some good information for the, for the public. I think it'd be important in their communities to know.
And that is something that we will look at as we do our budget coming forward. We have not done cost center analysis before, as, as I'm aware of.
Okay.
So we have not done cost center analysis, but we can look at true costs. We do know what we put as operating expenses, and we can truly look at the indirect costs and everything. We do have those numbers, but we haven't put those together. So that's something that we can put together as we bring forward our budget documents for next year.
So would they just kind of, you know, I'm just assuming that they would, you know, each of them stand alone, like their own business, and then they would all come under like a, you know, corporate umbrella for the, for the library, so it would be actually, be able to see how those...
Right.
Something similar to that, just simplifying it in my mind.
Yes, yes. And that's what I call a cost center analysis, and we can actually do that cost center, indirect and direct costs.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And, uh, we're really excited about the project, so keep us posted as it moves forward. All right. The final under, item under new business is, uh, discussion about rules and procedures for the Board of County Commissioners. So a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email around to the board asking some questions about, uh, our processes, and suggested consideration of a couple of possible, um, changes to the way that we handle the public input part of the meetings. And I think there's, um, a co- basically, it kind of boils down to sort of two questions. Um, we've got our existing, uh, public procedures, uh, document on the agenda. Um, but the two basic questions are, when during the meeting, we're gonna take public comment, the beginning or the end? And also whether we're gonna take public comment on, uh, all the motions throughout the meeting, which is, which is actually not our current policy, but it has been our practice. So I think those are the two fundamental questions, uh, before the board. And, um, so, uh, we talked about this at our pre-meeting two weeks ago, and so we're back having another follow-up discussion about it this evening. So I guess, you know, I would just, um, I guess I would just, as I did in the email I first sent out to the board, I would just, uh, reiterate that from my perspective, and again, we've done these things different ways. We've done them at the beginning, we've done it at the end, we've done it different ways, different times. And I think there's, I think there's pros and cons to it, um, to, to where, where you want to do it. Uh, if you do it at the beginning, folks who want to come in and talk to the board, they get a chance to do that right away. They don't, some, sometimes our meetings go very long. And so people don't know how long they're gonna be. They oftentimes are here for a really long time to have their chance to talk to us for three minutes. Um, but in other cases, folks who are here for other items on the agenda have to, you know, wait to get to the businesses on the agenda, because sometimes we have a lot of public comments. So there's, I don't think there's any right or necessarily wrong way of doing it. Um, but one thing that I did that I guess kind of persuaded me to, to kind of think about the beginning of the meeting is that we do adopt our consent agenda at the, uh, beginning, near the beginning of the meeting. And we have not had the practice of taking public comment before that. So I do feel like people should have a chance to comment, uh, on any items that are on the consent agenda. They are usually very, you know, issues that are not controversial in nature, if they're on the consent agenda. But just because we might think they're, they're, you know, consensus, uh, you know, in some cases, people have real interest in those items. So I do think there should be a chance for folks to, um, to comment on that, and moving it to the beginning would address that issue. So, you know, so for myself, I think moving it to the beginning is, would be a, a positive step. And I also believe that, you know, if we give public comment at the beginning of every meeting, and we also take additional public comment on any public hearings that the commission holds. So any rezonings, anything that requires a public hearing would also get its additional public comment. Um, you know, that provides a meaningful opportunity for the public to talk to us at every single meeting. I, you know, am not persuaded that taking public comment on every motion is, is, you know, is necessarily the best practice. So that's kind of where I'm at on it. And, uh, but this is a chance for all of us to sort of check in on this process question and, and see how we want to handle it going forward. Any other Commissioners want to chime in?
Um, yeah, I think it, it's an interesting process question. I think for me, the two main issues are making sure that members of the community can make their voices heard on these issues. Um, and doing that in a way that's actually accessible. Uh, and then on the other side, thinking about the flow of the meetings for everyone involved, members of the community, staff, certainly. Um, so I support, well, I, I support moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting, um, largely because I think it increases access to, for folks to be able to participate in person to know, public comment will begin almost immediately after 5:00 PM, and you'll get three comments to address, or three minutes to address any item on the agenda. Um, when we moved the public comment to the end of the meeting and started taking this other approach, I think to a person, when I get questions about public comment, people are trying to figure out what time to arrive, and then plan their evenings based on their work schedules, their childcare needs, needing to eat, et cetera, um, to sort of time it so they can participate. And I just like the idea of a consistent, open, fairly accessible process. Now, 5:00 PM is not gonna work for a lot of people. Um, uh, but I think nor does the moving target of somewhere between 6:45 and 9:30 PM work for a lot of people. So, um, so I support that move, and, um, yeah, look forward to hearing where, where other folks land on this.
Uh, so I've got a question.
Yeah, you're right. I need to turn it on. Thank you. Uh, okay. So when I'm reading the changes, uh, tell me the difference between the red and the difference between the highlighted, whoever wrote it.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. The red is deletion of existing language. The yellow is the, is additional new language. Is that correct?
Normally, normally, the red is the addition.
Red are proposed changes. Yellows are things that need discussion.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Say that one more time, Michael.
Red are the changes, proposed changes, based on your comments from a couple of weeks ago. And the yellow are proposed changes.
Or just highlighting items that you might want to look at.
Yeah, just reading, reading through this, it sort of brought up a few other things.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, there's red deletions and red additional new language as well.
Right. And some of the red additional new language are technical corrections. For instance, in item three, organization, your old language says every, every year you will have this meeting. And the statute actually says every year there's a general election. So we just was clarify a language.
Cause it said every Monday, every first Monday of every December, and that's, just doesn't work.
Okay. So we'll just have an organizational meeting every other year going forward?
No, no, sir. This proposal is, follows the oath of office language to say that, uh, where to go. Following, first Monday in December, following each general election at which the county officers are elected. And then during this meeting, or at the first regular meeting in December in other years.
Okay, correct.
But, so that, that also reads, though, that you're just doing a vice chair every two years?
No.
That's the way I'm reading it.
No.
Well, it says the board shall elect a vice chairman from among its members, and the board shall approve the bonding of county officials.
That is every year, every first Monday of December on regular years. But the swearing-in of office, the first part, the swearing-in of office and oaths, is every general election. And then during these meetings, on the first Monday of December, following each general election, you will swear an in, or the first meeting in other years.
I see what you're saying.
There's a, there, that or should be, that or should be. There is a comma there, not a period.
Yes, sir. That or should be an and. Okay.
I got a problem with this.
Okay, so any, Commissioner Farrar, could I, could I just finish up, please, before we get in? Um, I just want to make sure that, that, uh, the statute is clear, that it, that you, uh, you know, after a general election, you do that. But that election of vice chair is, is annual, because the way this read, it's every other year, or after the general election, so.
I see that.
Yes, sir.
I have that correction. Yes. The other thing that I saw was that in the, uh, in the original, um, rules that were shown as changes under section four, uh, item E, it says the chairman or any three members of the board may add an item to the agenda. We had made a decision previously that, that it required, you know, three members, but that the, the chairman was not put in the position nor could add something to the agenda by them, by themselves. County manager could do it, but that was a change that was made. Uh, I don't remember, a year or two, maybe?
That's still what it says, though, right?
Is it?
Well, on the website, it says chairman or any three. And then in the document we're reviewing, it says any three.
Okay, and the document we're reviewing. Okay, so, so then this must have been pulled from an earlier thing?
I think that's live now. I don't think it was ever updated after we voted on that.
So the website has not.
Uh, website hasn't been, yeah.
Yeah. We should look at that then, too.
Okay. So we just want to make, you know, make that, make that change, because, you know, uh, you know, I'd said it before, I'm not gonna get into again. I would not want to be, you know, put in the position to be, you know, phone call rung off the hook, expecting me to put something on the agenda. You know, it needs to be collaborative, which is what we, we, we changed. So I just want to make sure that was correct. Okay? And so in the new version, that is...
This, this is correct. This, this sounds like the websites.
Yeah. Yeah, this is correct.
The policy is, is, is updated.
All right.
Yes, three.
Commissioner Farrar?
Well, we have a policy in Buncombe County, and I've been here for seven years. In that policy, everything has to be on the agenda by Wednesday at noon. You put a placeholder there, then you add it to it on Friday. That's not legal. It takes all seven of us to put that placeholder on there. That's the, that's the problem that I have. It's, uh, what we're discussing now shouldn't even be, shouldn't be discussed. It should have been put off till the 17th, and this would have been on it. But you don't put placeholders, then you go behind it and put what you would have put. Now, Wednesday is the, the deadline. This come on Friday evening. I've talked to, uh, Mr. Avril about it, and, uh, this is stuff that's been going on for 20-something years. And so, uh, this needs to be buried today. Or get seven votes, whatever you want to.
Well, I, well, a couple of things. Uh, I, I think your concern is very legitimate, and the, I think the county manager would back me up, that when I learned that the information would not be prepared for when it went out on Wednesday, that, that, that your concern was the first concern I raised as well. So I, I think we might, you know, and it, and, um, you know, I think our staff worked very hard to get the materials that we need for our agenda on the website in time, you know, for, for when it goes live. There are occasions when, you know, some things come up between when the agenda's published and when things are voted on, that need to be added to the agenda. They just simply weren't ready. Um, if we want to, as a board, you know, we could adopt an actual policy around that. You know, the thing that I suggested to Avril was that, I mean, we could just say, hey, if it's, if there's, if there's any additional information that needs to go on the agenda, we're not gonna consider it. It has to go to the next meeting. If we want to adopt that position, we could do that. I think from time to time, it will mean that there will be items that we probably want to conduct business on that might get delayed. But if we want to take that position, we could, we could do that. Another, another option, um, would be that if there's ever any additional information that needs to be posted on the agenda, cause it's relevant to the issue that we're considering, um, we should, we should do what we, what the staff did this time, which is to send an email to all the Commissioners to specifically notify them. to all the commissioners to specifically notify them that there's been additional information added to the agenda. I'll, let me finish and you'll get a chance to talk to you, um, about that so that, so that, you know, the concern isn't that when the agenda goes live on Wednesday or Thursday, people check out the agenda, review it, think that they know everything that's going on, but then other information gets added later. So that would be a way to make sure folks are aware, there's something else out there, take a look at it. I'm open to different ideas on, on the best place to land on that, but I do, I, I think your concern is very legitimate. I want to make sure people have all the information they need to consider this when they, um, they act on and in the public as well. So I just wanted to give you some, some feedback on that.
This goes back to this. How many people sitting up here stood at that podium? How many people up here stood at that podium?
Were you polling the commission?
I've stood. You have? Okay.
I've stood.
How many times? How many times?
How many times have I stood at the podium?
Speaking to the county commissioners.
A number of times?
I don't remember that. Cause I've been around since 2000.
You were, I addressed you several times.
Yeah, but I can remember a couple of times. But the fact is, for four years, I stood at a podium and I got eight people to come so that I could talk for 10 minutes. It was at the end of the meeting. Had no problem with that. The people that came with me had no problem with that. And I don't see what we're doing here. We're, we're, we're playing a political game and I don't, you know, you know, cause Don's here and jury's here, uh, I don't see anybody out there unless somebody wants money and they'll come see it. Plain and simple. And we're running people off by what we're doing. All we have in evidence right now is basically a couple of people, a couple of news people and the rest of them are staff. If you take the staff out, this room's empty. We ought to turn down the offices. It was better when it was down at, uh, planning department. But I spoke at the city quite a few times at their podium. Brownie knows it. And I can tell you a whole lot of things that happened there, but I'm not going to tonight. But the main thing is when you have a rule, we hadn't changed it yet. This is still a rule that you can't add anything after noon on Wednesday. And this was added Friday evening. The public looks at the agenda on Wednesday because that's what they understand, maybe Thursday. But here, here it comes out Friday and what happens? I finally get a call. I figured I would, but I did. What is going on here? I said, can't answer it, but all I know is what we're doing is against what we've been doing at this county. I don't want to change all the rules at this county. I've, seven years, if I've had something to add to the agenda, I made sure everything was there before I added it. This wasn't, Brownie, and this is what you wanted. So you need to back off on this one.
Well, just, let me just respond briefly. So the, the agenda item was posted, the memo that Michael, yeah, and, and, and.
We'll talk about that when we talk about this.
All right. And the, Michael was working on this memo and he, in his email explained why, him, you know, said, look, we do want to have this out. This is the reason, wasn't ready to go then. So, um, I do not believe that we do have a actual formal policy saying that if information, or do we? Correct me if I'm wrong. Do we have a policy that says if things have not been on the published agenda by Wednesday, that additional information cannot be added to the agenda? Is there actual policy on that? I mean, I think we're all in agreement, we want that, but is there?
I'm looking through the rules, but I don't see it offhand real quick, but.
So what, so.
You going by all these years, Mr. Frye?
So what, okay. So what exactly did we add? And then I'm, then I got a comment.
This document? So the agenda item of rules and procedures was on the agenda. The document that we're looking at?
That we're looking at right now with the changes.
Was added after.
Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm, so I did not, I did, I did not answer the email because I wasn't going to answer it. But as long as I've been a commissioner, so I'm going to try to make this simple. I think it's very simple. We did not cover this in the pre-meeting and get seven people to agree to it. So, um, I, I believe that based on whether it's, whether it's written or you can pull it up in the next five minutes or not, it's the way we've conducted business in the six or seven years that I've been here. I think in the, in the interest of the public and the interest of the, you know, the, um, you know, the credibility of the board, that we, uh, I mean, if you want to talk about it all night, we can talk about it all night, but we, we can't vote on this until the public sees that. So because we missed getting the check marks on the, in the pre-meeting, you know, I don't see any other way than we need, we, we would have to address this next time.
So I'll make a suggestion. I mean, we actually don't have a policy on this. Three commissioners did ask to put this on the agenda, so it is, it's legitimately on the agenda. I would make the argument that if we wanted to vote on this, we could. But I, I think public comment's really important. I think the way we run the meetings is very important and we may not all land in the same place on this issue. I get a sense we probably will not. But here's my suggestion. I think we should, uh, we had a brief conversation about this at the pre-meeting. I think we should talk about this a little bit more this evening, get a sense of where the board might be on this, but let's not take a vote on this, this evening. I don't want, I don't want anyone to feel like this is sprung on anyone, right? There's, we can all have, we can, we may not all agree on this, but I want it to be a good process, especially if we're talking about the process itself. So let's just talk.
That was the word I was looking for was process.
Let's just, let's just talk about it a little bit more. Let's not vote on it tonight and we'll see where, you know, but let's give everyone a chance to share their views and we'll, uh, we can take this up for a vote at the next meeting.
But, Brownie?
Yes, sir.
There's public here that would like to speak on it, that, that.
And of course, we will take that public comment.
We will.
Yes, we will. All right. Other commissioners who haven't, haven't spoken on this yet?
I'll go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, I was one, wanted to keep it at the start of the meeting, but after we moved it to the end, I, I'm for leaving it at the end of the meeting because I feel like anything worthwhile for someone to come in here, that they can wait till the end, but also it's kind of educational for them to kind of see what, what we do and how we disagree to agree on a lot of things. So keeping it at the end, the time, you know, been here three years now and several of y'all's been here longer than that. Whenever we come in, we change from 4:30 to 5:00 to generate more people in here. It has not worked. We moved public comment from the beginning to the end. It has not worked. So it's like people that are interested are here, people that are not interested in our government are doing something now. So, uh, and as far as voting on all, on the consent agenda, I think that's a good idea. I don't think we're going to have but a couple of people to ever comment on the consent agenda. And I would like for us to be able to let the public comment on the consent agenda just to hear if someone brings something up that we have not addressed or thought about.
Cause we could do, we could do that, right?
Very simple.
We could allow, we could allow someone to, we could allow public comment on the consent agenda upfront and still leave public comment at the end. And that way, cause of the, the concern I had when you brought it up, the concern I had when, uh, I honestly didn't have strong feelings one way or the other, but the, as far as the beginning or the end, I just didn't like, I just didn't like the change or changing it. But the, the consent agenda, having an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda, you know, if, uh, I mean, I was going to suggest that if we ended up voting on this thing tonight was to amend it, to allow that and leave it alone, but, so.
All right. Mr. Whitesides, Ms. Edwards, any thoughts she'd want to share with us?
Yes. I first want to start with the items being placed on the agenda. If we do specifically look at that, I think we need to be very specific that right now the policy just says agenda. I think we need to be very careful then in saying all supporting documents also need to be posted along with it because I think that leaves a lot of room for interpretation in terms of what agenda is. So I can support that, but being very clear on it. Of course, being the new person, nine months in, learning from each of you has been really important in terms of the public comment and where that gets placed. I am leaning towards moving it toward the beginning of the meeting. After reaching out to a lot of newly elected commissioners that I met in January and learning what other counties are doing, that does seem to be the norm and the best practice. And I think it's worthwhile looking at that and learning from those counties who are doing it really well. And, um, moving forward, we'd like to support that.
Ms. Edwards? I'm sorry, when we had it at the beginning before, we had people in here that downed our staff, downed a lot of staff. And then they could walk out that door five minutes after they were here. And that's why we moved it back to the rear. So them, them people didn't show back up.
Well, from what I just heard, it didn't seem to really make a difference in terms of numbers. From what I think Commissioner Presley said, that changing it from the beginning to the end didn't really matter in terms of the number of people that were here.
Well, you had to.
I mean, maybe it shifted what people were saying and we need to be cognizant of that, but I'm not sure it shifted numbers.
Commissioner Frye, it, he, he is, he is correct. What it, what happened, not, not all the time, cause none of this happens all the time. I mean, you know, we don't, I mean, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're just giving, um, to our best of our recollection what's happened in the past. And so what would happen in some cases is you would have, you know, staff here and then you'd have people come in and they'd make comments directly at staff and then they'd leave and the staff's here all, all evening. So we had some, we had some issues with that. But that, but we did move it. Brownie, do you remember why we moved it?
I think we did have more public comment when we had it at the meeting. That's part of the reason I, you know, and look, some of it was negative. Some, you know, some of that negative was, was earned, right? I mean, like it's not all going to be here coming in and giving us golf claps every time. I mean, sometimes people have critical things to say and that's part of the process.
Golf clap? Can I see your golf clap?
It wasn't all golf claps.
It's a golf clap.
So that's okay.
But why did we do it? I mean, what?
We voted about two years ago to do it. I was the one vote to keep it at the beginning. So it's, I remember because it was a six-one vote.
Everybody voted.
And there had a lengthy discussion, not dissimilar from this one. And, uh, the mood of the board, the strong majority mood of the board was to move it to help with the flow of the meetings, particularly regarding, uh, respecting the time of guests who are part of presentations and.
Yeah, that's really.
Um, uh, there were some occasions when a lot of folks were commenting and in the meetings where public comment was taken 45 minutes at the beginning. So we had a big discussion about it and it was a six-one vote to move it to the end of the meeting.
But I remember also, we was both, you and I was listening then, is we backed it up because we had complaints, people could not get here at 5:00, 5:15.
And it didn't change.
And it did not change. That is exactly why we changed because as before, we honored, uh, what free transportation, bus parking. We tried everything to get people in here and it's not working unless someone lobbies to bring, bring a big group in here, which we've had to help signs up and we've had several times to quieten them down. Besides that, we've never had the problem.
Well, I have to, it's a bit in the weeds, but having people in this room talking is a good thing.
It's not a bad thing.
And having people weighing in on these, on issues and issues that matter to them is a great thing. So I think I will continue to plant my flag on the side of trying to find the time that's the most accessible to the most amount of people.
All right.
Um, I, I will say just if, is this the point at which, if this is going to be on our next agenda item, is this the point at which we would kind of propose specific revisions to the language? Cause if we're gonna, or do you?
I think that, um.
Or do you want to legal that?
You can amend it when it's voted on.
I think, I think if we're going to take this up at the next meeting, we don't need to do all the wordsmithing in this meeting. I think we kind of get a sense for maybe the direction and I'm trying to kind of listen to where folks are at. And, um, so I think, I think we can just kind of keep it more high level in this meeting and try to take what we learned tonight and craft some language that hopefully will, you know, if, if we want to make any change at all, we don't have to make any change at all. Um, Al, what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, first of all, Commissioner Frye, let me give you a history lesson here. First time I came before the commission was in the mid seventies. And it wasn't asked for money either. And I've been over the years several times, you know, I think, you know, I've been as well as city council, Brownie.
Hold your hand up.
Huh? Oh, well, no, I was just telling you, me, I'm going to tell you what I think. One thing I do believe in transparency. I mean, this is the key here and I think this is what we're talking about, even when we post things. But look, in two, less than three years, I've seen us go both ways at the end and at the beginning. When we came in, I remember we were at the beginning and I voted to move it to the end so more would come in. Uh, and I know I've gotten a lot of feedback from people who want it to stay at the end. The other part of that is though, if we bring it to the beginning, what I like about that, it gives people time to talk before we make a decision. And I want to hear the input from the public before we do that. And I think when we say we don't see a lot of people in the room here, folks, I talked to a lot of people who are watching us out there on television. I think we have a lot to do that. But, you know, right now, I'm still leaning, I haven't heard enough at this point to carry me against, you know, to move it to, to the end, you know, I, let's try the beginning. Maybe we'll get more input.
Well, just remember that anything we're voting on, we got to take public comment. So prior to a decision, except for the consent agenda, which was my point. You know, if you, if you figure out some way to vote on the consent agenda and leave it the way it is, you know, we have to vote, anything we're going to make a decision on, we have to take public comment.
No, we don't. That's, that's actually part of the proposal is that we would not take motions, we would not take public comment on every time there's a motion. If there's things on the agenda that are other than public hearings, whenever there's a public hearing, we'll take a motion. But if there's other things that there's not a public hearing on, let's say we do it at the beginning. Um, you know, that would be your chance to talk, talk to us about anything that's on the commission agenda. But if, let's say we take five, you know, motions on five different issues throughout the meeting, you know, you don't comment five different times.
Doesn't it take two commissioners to do that?
There would be a public comment period to talk to us about, that's what's, that's what's, you know, being discussed. So, um, hey, um.
So here's, here's the deal. I've been here six years. If I can't understand this, we probably won't even change.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what the email, that's what we've been talking about. So, all right. Okay. Um, so any, so this is a good discussion as I thought, there's a diversity of views and there are pros and cons to this. So I, I, uh, it's legit. Any other comments before we move on to this? We're not taking any vote on this. The next thing, the very next thing we're going to do is we're going to take public comment and you can talk about this or you can talk to us about, about anything you want to. So any other comments from the board before we move on? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your, your thoughts on this and, um, we'll take no action tonight. But we are at public comment and so.
Now, we have a couple of disagreements.
Yeah, yeah. We got the amendment.
Board appointments, sorry. Sorry, so sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Presley. The first item is the Ag Advisory Board. The first item is the Ag Advisory Board.
Nominate Alan Lang, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, Crime Stoppers Board of Directors.
I nominate, uh, Michael Fisher and Julie Goodman for reappointments to the board.
Question before you get a second, is that okay?
I think technically, we're supposed to have a second first.
Second. Alright, now I got a question. We don't have any information on Julie Goodman. Have the address, we don't have employer, we don't have the, anything?
They're serving now, right?
Yes, she is...
The reappointments?
It is a reappointment.
Oh, yeah, the reappointments, okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to support it, but just for the record, we need to make sure that information is complete.
So she, she does live in the county?
Yes, we didn't, we didn't have that information. We reached out for that information, but we didn't get it.
And we, and if we don't have the information, we shouldn't. Very simple, it's just, and I know I'm, I know I'm nitpicking, but it needs to be on there.
She could have moved out of the county.
Yeah, we don't know, we got to have that address.
We were, we were informed that she was still in the county, but we didn't receive the, the actual application that we normally get. We didn't have that on file, and we didn't receive a new application for this reappointment.
But she's been serving, and she's been a regular attendee of the meetings, regular participant?
Correct.
No, no, maybe she went off.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Alright, alright, now we come to public comment. The time limit for individual public comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is the public's chance to speak to the board. The board reserves the right to deny public address on subjects that we've previously taken public comment on earlier in the meeting. And you'll see a red light come on when your time is up, and when your time's up, please conclude. You're speaking at that time, we want to make sure we treat everyone fair, and give everyone the same amount of time. Alright, Mr. Yeldon?
I'm sure you're looking forward to meeting, Brownie, you're going to love it. But I think you all need to think about what happened tonight, because you all just proved the point that you need to take public comment at the end of the meeting. Because all this discussion went on tonight. And had you taken public comment at the beginning of the meeting, I would have never heard this discussion, and would not have been able to do what I'm fixing to do right now. First and foremost, gentlemen, I suggest you look at 3D. That is the second page of what was handed out. And it says, "Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, the chairman will ask if any member of the public has questions regarding items on the consent agenda." And Brownie, you've been doing that. However, items can only be moved from the consent agenda at the request of at least two commissioners. It's in your current rules and regulations, and you mark through it. People have an opportunity to speak. Somebody needs to read the rules. Then you need to go to 13A2. And 13A2 is amazing, because, I'll be looking for it and find it here in a minute. "After a budget ordinance has been adopted, all requests for new or additional funding or amendments of the previous budget ordinance must be submitted to and shall be reviewed by the county manager and acted upon at the discretion of the county manager. Any requests for funds must come to the board." So you can use the consent agenda, and shuffle money from one line to the other, and never bring it before the board, folks, as long as you don't put more money in the budget. And then public hearings, when the allotted time is up. What is the allotted time? That's marked out onto there. It says, you know, "Prior to the individual asking if he has any other questions." On your public hearing, what is the allotted time? I told Mr. Whiteside, you need to can this thing, and you don't need to bring it back next week. You need to read each line specifically, because words are important. And see that if each word is in here, does what it says it's going to do. Because I can't see you sit up there and tell me you want public input on your actions, when you don't even put on the agenda what your actions are. And yes, you're right, we need to have everything on the agenda, because I looked at that thing Wednesday, and I saw the old form on there, and I said, "Thank God, they're not going to do away with it at the end." That was what was on the agenda Wednesday, was the old form. And then I look at this. Folks, please, get it together, because the public out there is seeing you, sat here tonight. And you just proved, every one of you here, just proved, why you need to take the public comment at the end of the meeting. I don't care whether you want to hear me or not, Brownie, but Jerry and I represent the entire citizens of Buncombe County, as long as we're here.
Okay, great. Alright, anyone else? Mr. Rice? Oh, yeah, um, let Mr. Rice go, and then you'll be right after him, okay? Come on, now, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, I think you ought to have pre-meetings. I think you ought to have big ones. And then when you get up here and do your business, then we've got time to speak in public and talk about the voted pieces on the agenda. I've been here longer than anybody sitting up there. I don't care how old you are. And I've been here and watched this crap the whole thirty-two years or better, consistently. And I've got it on video to prove it. These things that you're talking about in your procedures is not nothing but a political football, and you just want it when you want it, and you don't want it when you don't want it. That's the whole thing about it. It ain't about listening to the public. It's about politics. You don't want to hear us. Me and Don might say a lot, but you don't want to hear the public either, unless it benefits your little teasy something that you want on the agenda. When all is said and done, there are more said than there are done. That's the bottom line. You talk too much, run your mouth too much. You only give us three minutes, and you sit up there for hours. And you don't say anything any better than we do. More things change, more things stays the same. This crap has went on for the years I've been here, and politics all the way to Washington, same old thing. Get down to real stuff here. Talk about real things. Wanda Green, how she used her power and authority to beat the people down that she had here to work for. The court records prove what I'm telling you she did. And she did a fabulous job under the Democrat Party. Now, let's ask yourself a question. Are you going to use your power and authority to beat me down, and Don down, and the public down, like Wanda did her staff? Are you going to open it up and give us the right and, and the obligations that we are as taxpayers to be heard? You just act like we're nothing. Let me tell you, I got news for you, we're something. You're nothing if you don't let us speak. We need to listen to the agenda item, but we need to hear the vote, or not, I mean, the discussion. We ought to hear that discussion before we're having an opportunity to speak, because we don't know what's on your mind. You know what's on ours, but we don't know what's on yours. We don't know how you've made decisions back in the back room. Don't tell me it don't happen, it does. It was caught with Wanda doing it. You need to reconsider what you're doing here. When you think about Wanda beating them down, you're trying to beat the public down. You need to be held accountable for it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Yes, sir, your turn.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to have to read through this to get through it in three minutes. My name's Gary Roberts, I have a farm in Alexandra, seventy-acre farm, that joins the Buncombe County landfill. I'm also a retired county employee, and also serve on your farmland preservation board. The landfill was cited in nineteen ninety-five or ninety-six. For the first twenty years, it was a great neighbor. And I'm not ashamed to say it was a great neighbor. The, the community loved it, everybody in the community got along with the landfill, and everything was good. But something changed in the last two years. We started getting smells from the landfill. Prominent winds out of the west carried the smells east right into my property. When we, this first started, I contacted the Department of Environmental, Natural Resources, and the state agents that controls and monitors landfills. They said they would take care of it, and they did for several months. But then it started again. I talked with the landfill manager, little was done. Then I called your interim county manager, and he said he would have someone call me. And someone from the solid waste department did call me, and he said he was short of help, but would try to work on it. Well, we had several months that it was better, but then it came right back. This spring, the whole left side of the landfill on the north slope, for six weeks, was left uncovered. If you go to the landfill any morning around eight o'clock, and be the first one in the landfill and take your trash up to the top, it's not completely covered. The spray that they put on it, the grans, the grace, the ground spray that they put on it, it holds all the papers in place, but it can keep the odor from coming in, unless it's covered with dirt. Well, several months later, like I said, it was right back. It stays uncovered. I'm absolutely not saying that the smells cause illness. But this March, I've got lung problems. My neighbor to the north of me has lung problems. My neighbor to the left of me has lung problems. I'm not saying that there's a coincidence, I'm not saying that the landfill has anything to do with it. I've been in a lot of stuff all my life, and, and I can't say that the landfill is the problem, but... I just ask that you just keep it covered.
Right, thank you, thank you for taking time to share that you're concerned with us. Alright, anyone else? Alright, I believe we have, well, let me make an announcement, then I believe we have a closed session to address a couple of things. September seventeenth at eight thirty a.m., the Buncombe County Commission will be holding a strategic planning workshop, workshop, which will include our department heads and the members of the commission. So we held at First Baptist Church, Five Oak Street, third floor dining room in downtown Asheville. That evening at seven, on September seventeenth at five p.m., will be the commissioner's next regular meeting here at two hundred College Street, room three two six. Mr., Ms. Hockady, can you talk to us about the closed session items?
Yes, we need a motion pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. This is not to discuss a specific case cited, but just to preserve the privilege. And then, an additional closed session motion under one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A four, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session for those two items?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We do not expect to take any action on those matters this evening. When we come back from closed session, we anticipate we will just adjourn.